All right, good evening. It is 6:00 PM Tuesday, February 25th, City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Join me in standing for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for the day and we thank you for the beauty of it, the awesome weather that we had today as we look forward to spring arrival. Pray that your guide our directions tonight, our conversations and decisions on behalf of the city, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Nicole? Councilmember Carroll?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Boghossian?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Hahn?
Here.
Councilmember Streeman?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Mayor Pounds?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. First item, the citizens' comments. Before we head there though, Mayor O'Neill from Sullivan's Island had reached out and wanted to take some time tonight to publicly thank our community and public safety folks for the response on what's been happening on their island the last couple of days. So Mayor, thanks for joining us. Pat will give you the podium.
Thank you very much for having me, Mayor Pounds and Councilmembers. I really appreciate it. And I really appreciate all the great help we've received over the last few days from your fine fire department and police department. You may be aware that Saturday evening, we had a very, very destructive fire in the 3,000 block of Jasper. And your fire department contributed a battalion chief and a tower truck, which really made a big difference in the ability to not necessarily keep the structures from burning. It was a total loss, but they contained the fire just to that structure because as fierce as it was, it easily could have spread to other nearby structures. And your police department helped quite a bit with containing the traffic with that situation. Last night unfortunately, we had another need for assistance. Our police got a call that there was a missing person thought going to the beach, and it turns out he was at the beach, he was located. We learned he was suicidal after we got the initial call, and unfortunately, by the time he was found, it was a completed suicide. But your officers were there to keep the onlookers off of the beach path from both ends. A very sad event. But again, it illustrates the importance of our mutual aid agreements that we have and our longstanding tradition of helping each other when necessary. So I really wanted to thank the Isle of Palms for being such a good partner and such an important friend in these things.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chief Corinette, Chief O., thank you and your teams for what you did. This is what we do. Small islands, small communities, to help each other out. So Pat, thanks for taking the time.
It works. Yes, thank you all.
I know. Yep.
Lady Bell?
Thank you. Randy Bell, 41st Avenue. "Executive session serves the purpose of maintaining confidentiality in matters as personnel and legal advice. The February 13th agenda was to interview candidates for the city administrator position. Discussions outside of that agenda are not protected FOIA conversations. So I want to ask this council, does the council find it acceptable for any sitting mayor to do the following? Holding conversations with an interim city administrator discuss an already closed application position. Discussing confidential candidate search information with a disinterested, ready-to-retire interim city administrator. Discovering sudden interest and then claiming that there was no compensation discussed. Unilaterally scheduling a candidate interview without authority, with complete disregard for robbers' rules of order, and no vote of council to add this candidate exists. Approaching a co-member of the administrative committee with a proposal to only interview that candidate and to not interview any of the three outside candidates. That alone is a FOIA quorum violation, plus discussing this same proposal with other council members. So how is this acceptable? City administration has slow-walked relevant candidate information despite multiple FOIA requests. Does the public have a right to know candidate qualifications prior to a hijacked hiring process? The city deserves the most qualified city administrator, period." So the council will likely move forward. However, there will be corroborating evidence in many issues outlined and discussed, they will ultimately be public, but unfortunately, it's likely to be too late. So three minutes is not ample time to enumerate the ethical, legal, and code of conduct violations reported and witnessed. Reports that a council member was threatened or felt threatened is more than disturbing. City employees watching a non-public executive session on an upstairs video is also disturbing. The city has an obligation by law to provide a workplace that is free of threatening behavior or hostility. Competitive pay should be free from impropriety. Tomorrow at 11:00, we will witness a mayoral head fake to hold a special session of council void of public comment. To be clear, the issue is not with our interim city administrator. He is an honorable person whom I admire. The hiring process has been corrupted. The only remaining question is which council members have the integrity to end this behavior? It is both fiscally irresponsible, procedurally unethical, and I hate to say it, but no one's father would be proud of this behavior. I was always taught to tell the truth. It's much easier to remember. Thank you.
Tony Santiago? No idea.
Tony Santiago, 60 Ocean Point. Some of you might know, I am the owner of the leading executive search firm in the country and my specialty, I've been doing it for over 40 years. So this is an area my wife would actually say, for once, I know something about. With that in mind, the process is a little bit disconcerting to say the least. Standard procedure was done initially. Large pool of candidates, 70-plus, narrowed down to 20, bring the committee, narrowed down to three. Two of them will be people that are city administrators already, so they're leading their city practice at administrative level. One is a number two, which is a normal process. And you would look at the number ones and say, they are going to cost us the most, that they are going to be the hardest to recruit. The number twos will be people that are wanting to step up for the first time into that leadership role. You will get them at a discount. The number twos are an interesting group because you have to really make sure they want the job. So they have to have desire, tremendous desire. So the search firm will evaluate for that, and then capability and abilities to do the role. The longer somebody's in the number two role, the rule of thumb is they're least likely they're ready or ever going to want the number one role. Pretty standard. So if we see somebody in a 20-year career that has not applied ever for that role, twice when they had the opportunity to, they've not interviewed or gotten an offer from another city, it's a telling tale. As the search firm, I would be recommending that company to stay away from that candidate. Now would be an external candidate. If you have the same characteristics with an internal candidate, the one thing you should absolutely know, you're going to get at a home team discount. They're going to be the cheapest candidate available. That's because their benefits are accruing, their pensions are accruing, they have a comfort level of knowing everybody in the organization, they will make the move at a more reasonable price. What I'm hearing is, we're going to pay premium. I went benchmark this compensation level. For salary.com as of February this year, pay range will be 121 to 159 for Isle of Palms specifically. You can do it yourselves and see the same data. If we in fact are going to pay a premium and a number close to $180,000 for somebody who is a number two and never applied or interested in being a number one, and does not have that proven ability yet, let me reiterate, a CEO-level job, which is what the city administrative level is, and it's actually quoted in the actual state bylaws on this, that that title is equivalent to a CEO, they are policy creators, initiators. They are not just day-to-day management people. The problem I have in the planning and administration group, nothing personally with Doug, but the problem I've had, is you know, I came here and initiated this issue on the policies of the ordinance that we had, this so-called agreement with the resort. We were told from that team that this was an agreement that couldn't be changed. When I brought it up, I had got challenged from that planning group. I went and got legal counsel, and you know we could change it, and we did change it.
Mr. Santiago?
If not, we would have had an issue. Sweetgrass never should have been built with the parking that doesn't have.
Mr. Santiago?
And that falls on that planning group. I think this would be a terrible mistake putting somebody in over their head. Thank you.
Al Claus?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Al Claus, Three Grand Pavilion. As Jimmy Ward once told me, "It needed to be said," unquote, which always resonated with me. Let's get one thing clear. None of us own this island. We are only stakeholders until we are not stakeholders. My stake hit the ground in 1988. No, I am not entitled, nor are any of you. I am here tonight as a result of the four recent articles posted in the Island Eye News regarding the most recent train wreck, a flawed attempt by city council to hire a city administrator. The facts and details are disturbing. I have yet to see any of the accomplices who drank the Kool-Aid, helping orchestrate the train wreck, run to anyone's defense. Analytically, I compiled the following icons. Unconscionable, unacceptable, moral compass, fiscally irresponsible, arbitrary and capricious, unforced errors, disrespectful, code of conduct, common sense, cluster, R-rated, mental abuse, transparency, violence in the workplace, accountability, embarrassment, anger management, self-inflicted wounds, integrity. Based on my analysis and understanding, I respectfully request the following. Immediately stand down, stay the process of hiring a city administrator unless you redress your actions complying with the original published, processed, and code of ethics. Engage an independent forensic law firm to document all facts and events surrounding council's activities in an attempt to hire a city administrator. The postmortem is to be posted on the IOP.net website and the Island Eye News in its entirety. Expectations. Constructively, stakeholders of this community believe it is in the best interest of the city, the council, and the stakeholders for certain council members to tender their resignations. You know who you are, and we know who you are. We respectfully request you resign now before the court of public opinion rules and speaks in November. The goalposts are not yours to move. The coach has lost the locker room.
Michelle Boykin?
Good evening. I'm Michelle Boykin, and my husband and I love living on this island. I'm going to keep it simple, so I only need a minute. When it comes to important issues, we expect processes to be followed, not circumvented. When they aren't followed, it makes us suspicious. Processes are part of the agreed-upon structure and are to be followed by all. Be kind. Treat each other with respect, whether it's in a public forum or behind closed doors. There will never be a time when we all agree, but there is no need to raise voices and absolutely no reason to ever curse at each other. This is unacceptable behavior and disappointing. Let's do better.
Laura Lovins?
Good evening. My name is Laura Lovins. I live at Five Links Clubhouse Court on Isle of Palms. I'm here tonight to address the hiring process that is currently in progress to replace our former city administrator. From a resident point of view and per the city's own job description as a guide, here are the qualifications that are needed at this point. First, broad and varied work experience. Longevity in a position, in one position, is not a qualification for leadership. We need someone who has worked as a prior city administrator, preferably with a degree in public administration. Prior relevant experience matters. Number two, strong leadership and ethical governance. The city administrator must execute the policies set by council and make decisions based on professionalism, integrity, and transparency that fosters trust between local government and residents. A city administrator in a beach community faces unique challenges including storm preparedness, tourism management, environmental sustainability, and fluctuating economies. It is imperative that a city administrator not only have the necessary tools and training to handle this issue, but also have existing relationships with state-elected officials and agencies that have been developed over several years so that he or she can hit the ground running. Fourth, this candidate must have a long-term commitment to the job, not just three or four years or even less. So now as a resident, I ask, as the current internal candidate who was added to the list after the application window closed on December 31st, 2024, and after the city did due diligence, narrowed the field down from 79 applications to a final three over a period of several months, does this candidate fit the qualifications required for the city's most important administrative position? Sadly, I would say no. You are selecting an administrator charged with executing ethical governance and following the city's policies and procedures, and the internal candidate has violated all of that by being willing to be added to the hiring process after the window closed. So how do we fix this? How do we get back to the process as it stood on December 31st? You need to vote for one of the three viable candidates and do what is ethical. Thank you.
Susie Wheeler?
The debacle of the, sorry, Susie Wheeler, pardon that, oh, pardon. The debacle of the executive session on February 13th is beyond disappointing. There appear to be so many issues, three minutes might not even scratch the surface, but here goes. First, I want to say that I'm sorry that Douglas has gotten drubbed into this muck and mire. I have respect for him and the job he's done for the city. I do believe that there are serious problems with the way that his hat was put in the ring, none of which I believe are his fault. From a financial point of view, it's hard to swallow that this position afford such a prime salary of $180,000. That would be an increase of approximately 48% of his current salary, approximately 27% of Desri's salary, 41% more than the current fire chief, and 48% more than the police chief. When you contrast that with the city administrator salaries for North Charleston, Mount Pleasant, and Charleston, all under $110,000, that's a 62% increase of our surrounding areas when we have a small fraction of their full-time populations. He did remind the city that this salary also affects the budget in the form of retirement costs. What would have been an annual retirement of $60,000 could now reach $90,000. That means an increase of over three-quarters of a million dollars of lifetime. Not to mention that it sets a precedent for the salary for any future incoming city administrators. Now for the executive session, Shenanigans. Several details have emerged from that meeting, none of which are good, and I have zero interest in knowing protected information from that session. I do feel that we as citizens are entitled to the full truth about any threatening behavior, breach of ethics, violations of code of conduct, and I firmly believe that none of those are on the agenda and are not protected under the cloak of the executive session. There is such a feeling of distrust with this entire situation that I believe it's incumbent upon every member of this council to be fully transparent about what transpired during and after that executive session. The questions I have are, were there unpublished media sites where there was one present to discuss the city administrative position? Was there an abuse of authority in how Douglas's application was processed? Did anyone on council use profanity against another member? Did anyone exhibit threatening behavior and profanity laced hiring against a female member of our council? Was anything done to stop such behavior and protect the threatened member? Why was the meeting stream cut short before the meeting was adjourned and the victim's concerns addressed? And were city staff members upstairs watching the video of the protected executive session? I'd like to give a perspective about integrity, since that seems to be a term that's bandied about. Honesty is truthfully answering a question when asked. Transparency is being open, honest, and accountable without omissions and without being asked. Integrity is having and exhibiting virtue. In closing, I'd like to say, I'm sorry you were put in that position where you felt threatened and unsafe. I believe you have been shaped by anyone who allowed that to happen.
Thank you. Christine Donovan?
Christine Donovan, 26th Avenue. So good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As a 35-year full-time resident, I have two important topics to address, and the main one is that I address in very powerful ways. I agree with everything that has been said so far. So I have two important topics. The first is selection of our next city administrator. While I don't have a vote, I, like many engaged residents, care deeply about our city's future and leadership. Desri was an exceptional city manager known for her fairness, wisdom, and ability to collaborate with employees, residents, and elected officials. Her decade of service set a high standard. As you choose your successor, I urge you to consider, how long is this candidate likely to remain at the position? Do they have a long-term career ahead of them, or are they nearing retirement? What financial impact will this decision have? What level of experience and education does a candidate have? Will their being chosen unite and move us forward, or could it contribute to further division and negative publicity? Were they identified through the city's professional search process, or were they added to find this pool through other channels? Did they follow the well-publicized application procedure demonstrating their ability to respect and adhere to clear processes? This is fundamental to the role. Most importantly, will they be truly independent or beholden to certain elected officials? Your decision will shape the future of our city. I urge you to act with integrity and in the best interest of all residents. Second, a recent change in the city council packets. For years, public comments have appeared on Page Three right after the agenda, but last Friday, after initially being placed there, they were moved to the middle of the packet. This may seem small, but it affects transparency. Public input matters, and its placement should reflect that. I can't help but wonder, was this an oversight or a deliberate shift? I ask that public comments remain easy to find and prioritized in your materials and your consideration. Thank you.
Catherine Malloy?
Good evening, council committee. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm Catherine Malloy, residing at 3613 Waterway Boulevard for 25 years, and in addition, being a resident for four years in the late 80s. I've attended more council meetings than I care to enumerate, trust me. So it gives me no pleasure to be here today and to express my dismay about what transpired during the search process for the position of city administrator for the Isle of Palms. I am fully informed, reviewed the well-publicized application filing process and agendas, the meeting videos and myths of the administration committee of 110, 123, and 124 that culminated in the selection of three well-qualified individuals who followed proper procedures and timelines as stipulated. These three candidates were invited to be interviewed by city council. This is where the whole thing goes awry. It should not have happened, and I would not be standing here today if proper procedures and process were on. To continue obtaining knowledge about the process, I then read all the opinion pieces and letters to the editor published in the IDI discussing the circumstances. Looking at the facts, it's obvious that a serious breach of trust occurred, which I believe is not only a violation of ethics, but is fiscally irresponsible, and it calls for accountability. We citizens deserve transparent leadership, and we need leaders who value a level playing field for all of us. Don't you just love it when people use sports analogies? It's like an Olympic event where after the buzzer sounded, the score changed. The search process was subverted by the inappropriate behavior of the mayor interfering with the process, followed by the inappropriate behavior of a council member toward another council member, causing that person to feel threatened by obscene gestures and language. From where I stand, the only appropriate action is for the mayor and the offensive council member to resign from city council. Thank you.
Josh Huser?
My name is Josh Huser. I live at 60 Sandwich Lane in Wildes. Thank you again for the opportunity to address you, my elected representatives at this city council meeting. I appreciate your time and your attention. When I spoke to you at your last council workshop about hidden cameras and short-term rentals, I was thankful that I had a forum to talk to all nine of you at the same time and the city staff. These citizen comments are really important, not just for the residents, but also for you policymakers and for the staff who implement the policies that affect the people who live here. After my citizen comments, council member Rusty Streeman added the hidden camera subject to the next public safety committee meeting agenda on March 4th at 11:00 AM. Thank you for that. I encourage you to watch the meeting and help as we try to respond to our congressperson's gripping testimony. I emailed all of you the transcript of her speech, which we are now part of the meeting packet for tonight. So if you have not had a chance to watch her testimony or to read it, I encourage you to do so. Also, watch the meeting, the public safety committee meeting. We must come together and act. This is a moment for unity in a time where we have seen so much discord, and we can thrive when we are united. And if we want to unite and thrive, we all need to be more careful with how we interact with ourselves and our neighbors. As our elected representatives, you have a heightened duty not just to interact with your neighbors, but also to represent us. When you're on social media and public or interacting with other council members and city staff during meetings, our eyes are going to be watching you. You have more scrutiny because you have the awesome power to take official action on behalf of the city. Your job is to set policy for the city, but your purpose should be to leave the city in a better position than it was when you got on council. I have listened to residents go at each other over the city administrator position, and I don't like to see my neighbors fighting like this. I have seen the us-versus-them battle resurface with a vengeance. I don't like that either. We cannot live together in harmony if we are constantly tearing each other apart. It is up to you as our elected leaders of this city to set the tone, and if you go negative, then the people who support you will go negative as well. From my understanding, this conflict is not about our city staff, but about our form of government and the processes by which our government functions. It's about due process. Our interim city administrator is not on the ballot, but our elected representatives are. If our interim city administrator has the vote to become the permanent city administrator, then I will support him. If he is successful, then our city is successful. But please know that I am a strong advocate for government transparency and for good process. No matter if you win or lose, you accept the outcome when the process is unfair. Unfortunately, when the process is tainted, the results are questioned. This has been chaotic, to say the least, and my final thoughts are we should all learn from this and make sure we do better in the future. Thank you.
Jim Ray?
collaborate with employees, residents, and elected officials. Her decade of service set a high standard. As you choose your successor, I urge you to consider, how long is this candidate likely to remain at the position? Do they have a long-term career ahead of them, or are they nearing retirement? What financial impact will this decision have? What level of experience and education does a candidate have? Will their being chosen unite and move us forward, or could it contribute to further division and negative publicity? Were they identified through the city's professional search process, or were they added to find this pool through other channels? Did they follow the well-publicized application procedure demonstrating their ability to respect and adhere to clear processes? This is fundamental to the role. Most importantly, will they be truly independent or beholden to certain elected officials? Your decision will shape the future of our city. I urge you to act with integrity and in the best interest of all residents. Second, a recent change in the city council packets. For years, public comments have appeared on Page Three, right after the agenda. But last Friday, after initially being placed there, they were moved to the middle of the packet. This may seem small, but it affects transparency. Public input matters, and its placement should reflect that. I can't help but wonder, was this an oversight or a deliberate shift? I ask that public comments remain easy to find and prioritized in your materials and your consideration. Thank you.
Catherine Malloy.
Good evening, Councilwoman. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm Catherine Malloy, residing at 3613 Waterway Boulevard for 25 years, and in addition, being a resident for four years in the late 80s. I've attended more council meetings than I care to enumerate, trust me. So, it gives me no pleasure to be here today and to express my dismay about what transpired during the search process for the position of city administrator for the Autopols. I am fully informed, reviewed the well-publicized application filing process and agendas, the meeting videos and myths of the administration committee of 110, 123, and 124 that culminated in the selection of three well-qualified individuals who followed proper procedures and timelines, as stipulated. These three candidates were invited to be interviewed by city council. This is where the whole thing goes awry. It should not have happened, and I would not be standing here today if proper procedures and process were on. To continue obtaining knowledge about the process, I then read all the opinion pieces and letters to the editor published in the IBI discussing the circumstances. Looking at the facts, it's obvious that a serious breach of trust occurred, which I believe is not only a violation of ethics, but is fiscally irresponsible, and it calls for accountability. We citizens deserve transparent leadership, and we need leaders who value a level playing field for all of us. Don't you just love it when people use sports analogies? It's like an Olympic event where, after the buzzer sounded, the score changed. The search process was subverted by the inappropriate behavior of the mayor interfering with the process, followed by the inappropriate behavior of a council member toward another council member, causing that person to feel threatened by obscene gestures and language. From where I stand, the only appropriate action is for the mayor and the offensive council member to resign from city council. Thank you.
My name is Josh Huser. I live at 6th and Waterway Lane in Wildus. Thank you again for the opportunity to address you, my elected representatives at this city council meeting. I appreciate your time and your attention. When I spoke to you at your last council workshop about hidden cameras and short-term rentals, I was thankful that I had a forum to talk to all nine of you at the same time and the city staff. These citizen comments are really important, not just for the residents, but also for you policymakers and for the staff who implement the policies that affect the people who live here. After my citizen comments, council member Rusty Streeman added the hidden camera subject to the next Public Safety Committee meeting agenda on March 4th at 11:00 a.m. Thank you for that. I encourage you to watch the meeting and help as we try to respond to our congressperson's gripping testimony. I emailed all of you the transcript of her speech, which we are now part of the meeting packet for tonight. So, if you have not had a chance to watch her testimony or to read it, I encourage you to do so. Also, watch the meeting, the Public Safety Committee meeting. We must come together and act. This is a moment for unity in a time where we have seen so much discord, and we can thrive when we are united. And if we want to unite and thrive, we all need to be more careful in how we interact with ourselves and our neighbors. As our elected representatives, you have a heightened duty not just to interact with your neighbors, but also to represent us. When you're on social media and public or interacting with other council members and city staff during meetings, our eyes are going to be watching you. You have more scrutiny because you have the awesome power to take official action on behalf of the city. Your job is to set policy for the city, but your purpose should be to leave the city in a better position than it was when you got on the council. I've listened to residents go at each other over the city administrator position, and I don't like to see my neighbors fighting like this. I have seen the us-versus-them battle resurface with a vengeance. I don't like that either. We cannot live together in harmony if we are constantly tearing each other apart. It is up to you as our elected leaders of this city to set the tone. And if you go negative, then the people who support you will go negative as well. From my understanding, this conflict is not about our city staff, but about our form of government and the processes by which our government functions. It's about due process. Our interim city administrator is not on the ballot, but our elected representatives are. If our interim city administrator has the vote to become the permanent city administrator, then I will support him. If he is successful, then our city is successful. But please know that I am a strong advocate for government transparency and for good process. No matter if you win or lose, you accept the outcome when the process is unfair. Unfortunately, when the process is tainted, the results are questioned. This has been chaotic, to say the least. In my final thoughts, are we should all learn from this and make sure we do better in the future? Thank you.
Jim Ray.
Say it again, Nicole.
Jim Ray. Ray.
Ray. I don't think he's here.
He's not here.
Nope. Brian Duffy.
Brian Duffy, 3613 Waterway Boulevard. Good evening, council. Thank you for taking the time to listen. I'm here tonight to talk about bullies. You see, the first time in my life when I faced down a bully to protect others was in eighth grade, and I never stopped facing down bullies. You know, in high school, students and teachers. Imagine that. Of course, very much the business crew, there were plenty to be dealt with. I have always faced down bullies. The one thing I learned about bullies is that they are so very fragile. They're like three-year-olds caught with their hand in a hooky dart. They can't take criticism. They are unwilling to apologize and say that they're sorry. I find it so sad we have bullies on this council. The citizens of this island deserve better. Thank you.
Deb Miller.
Good evening. Deb Miller, 340 Waterway Lane. I just am here to talk about behavior and rules and doing the job that voters elected you to do. You know, every time we walk into this chamber, I see that sign, civility, respect, and solutions. Turn around and look at it, because y'all see it? My favorite saying is on a towel that I have at home. I understand the concepts of cooking and cleaning, just not how they apply to me. That sign applies to you. Civility, defined as polite, reasonable, and respectable behavior. I see a councilwoman leaving a dais at a street meeting because she felt threatened, visibly upset. I'm thinking whatever went down in that executive session was not civil, yet it went unchecked. Respect, defined as a positive way of treating someone. Showing respect means demonstrating a concern for people you interact with and treating them as equals. How's that going for us? If I violate the actions on this banner, I likely will be muted or treated to a police escort to the parking lot. That's my guess. But if a council member violates it, the consequence is not a gavel, not a sanction, apparently nothing. It's time to revise the provisions of the code of conduct, to make it mandatory, and include disciplinary action for violations. That's my first ask. The last point on the banner is solutions, defined as the process of solving problems. In this case, the problem is a vacancy in the city administrator position. The city has a set process for filling the vacancy, yet it's clearly not being followed. Somebody went rogue, and the collateral damage from those actions, should it not be stopped, will be felt for years to come. Do your job, set aside the politics, read our code and procedures, and follow them. All candidates had an equal opportunity to apply prior to the deadline of December 31. One candidate didn't seize that opportunity for whatever reason. The events that transpired after that to bring him into the fold may or not be illegal, but by golly, they are clearly unethical. The logical, ethical, and legal solution to the problem is to respect the date of December 31, consider the three candidates selected by the admin committee, and hire the one who is best committed and qualified for the job. Moving forward, here's the second ask. Time to enact ethics ordinance. Surely, you all recognize the need. It should be an ordinance that, number one, establishes guidelines for ethical standards of conduct for all officials and anybody on a board or commission by identifying those actions that are incompatible with the interests of the city.
Ms. Miller.
Two, outline the procedures to ensure the alleged charge is valid and serves as a basis for disciplining those who violate the terms. Bottom line, stop the political games and the disrespect unto the residents for council and to the residents and stop the nonsense.
Chris Alfred.
Hello. My name is Chris Alfred. I live at 3242 Second Avenue, Autopols. I'm as nervous as a cat, so please bear with me. First thing I wanted to say was, Donnie, I really appreciate, respect your team, the people that work for you, you, and what you do. And here's why. It seems to me that we create an infinite amount of trash. My yard creates an infinite amount of acorns and yard waste, and there's an infinite amount of trash, old appliances, whatever, on the sides of every street. You guys have a finite amount of people. You have a finite amount of time in a week. You have a finite amount of budget. You have a finite amount of equipment, and you are fighting the fight to keep us clean and environmentally responsible, and I thank you, and I really thank you, the men and women that work with you. I appreciate it. The second thing I wanted to say is that I don't know the other three candidates that don't really follow the process. What I do know is that Douglas Kerr is a wonderful person. He has the character, the integrity, the knowledge and the experience to do, I think, a fantastic job for the city. Given everything else I've heard, that's fine. Douglas is a fine person, and I think will do a fine job for us. I would pick him in a minute. That's me. But I guess that's all I have to say about that. But Doug's a wonderful person, and I think very capable, and would be a good solution for our problem. I guess the third and final thing I'd like to say is that thanks to everybody on the council and the mayor. And I know that you're all there because you care about it and that you're passionate about it, and sometimes passion may lead to us being passionate, I guess you would say. But I think if you guys can, you know, continue to collaborate, cooperate, and dare I say compromise, that you will find the solutions to make this island continue to be the best place in the whole country to live for me and my family. So, I thank you for getting into the arena and engaging. So, that's all I got.
Nicole, that's it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next item is approval of previous meeting's minutes. We have a city council meeting on January 28th, special city council workshop on February 11th, special city council meeting on February 13th. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I've got something that needs to be brought up on that. The special city council meeting, February 13th, it's mentioned that in the minutes that it, city council returned from executive session at 2:28 p.m., after going into executive session at 10:01 a.m. So, I don't think we were in there for four and a half hours.
You were.
Yeah.
You were.
Were?
Yes, sir.
Didn't feel like it, but thank you. Bring it up.
Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion we approve.
Second, thank you. Any other edits or changes, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. First item is old business consideration, parking lot layout for the intercoastal Waterway side of the Marina parking lot. You've got a new schematic in your packet. Katie, I think we're on the letter P at this point. I mean, do you want to walk us through it, or Douglas, or who do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I'll start us off on this. So, we started off with the original, or the, I don't know, original's probably not the right word, but the lease, the restaurant's lease, and it had color-coded areas that appeared to be drawn in marker or maybe even crayon. And adjacent to the restaurant was their restaurant space, and then there was a space in the middle that was to be shared among the tenants. And then there was the space at the farthest from the restaurant on the intercoastal side that was leased back from the restaurant at one point in time, and that extends, I believe, along with their lease until 2045. So, we can, in essence, consider that full 100% restaurant property. So, considering that we've gone through so many iterations of this parking lot in an attempt to give the restaurant their space and keep the city space separate, we came up with the idea that we would just do a basic square footage. We would give 100% of the two restaurants plus half of the shared property, and whatever that square footage came out to was what the restaurant would get, and the rest of the square footage was what was the city's. In doing that, we're somewhat trying to put a square peg in a round hole to try to get it to fit on that space with what the restaurant needs, along with what the city needs with trailer parking, and then ingress and egress, and primarily getting semis and things of that nature all the way into the restaurant and out, and then also getting patrons in and out safely. And so, we came up with Plan P. Do we have that to work on?
Yeah, Amy, do you have the packet pulled up? Could you put it on the screen or not? If not, okay. It's in the packet.
Yeah, so, that is, after a lot of time looking at, working with Matt Klein, he has been eternally patient. This is what we've come up with. I think it could work. You know, it gives, it kind of checks all the boxes. It's not perfect. I don't think that we're going to get a perfect solution down there, but it does have the requisite square footage delineations that we were shooting for, so.
And Katie, real quick, since we don't have it on the screen, so the city's portion, if you will, is seven trailer parking spots, some ingress/egress, to Katie's point, as well as some green space around our new dock. That's the city's square footage, to your point, trying to divide and conquer with the restaurant. Douglas, anything?
No, I would say that's a fair assumption of what the city is gaining, a little bit larger green space, seven dedicated full-time trailer spaces, about 15 new car spaces that are in what is currently used as the employee lot, and then it also accommodates a 15-foot buffer along the southern edge of the property, which is a requirement of a city code.
So, yeah, I think you may have answered my question, but we had 16 spots that we added in the other, dedicated to, for employee, for resident parking. So, now we have, you're saying we have that equal amount, 15 there?
Yes, that's correct. Plus, the, you know, and really, the shape and maneuverability of the trailer spaces has always been the design challenge, and we have, in working with Matt, we've made it clear that we had to have those. And quite frankly, that is what works against the efficiency of the space, but those were in there. And I think that Matt's feeling, and I think the design shows this, is that at this point, with the city having added as many spaces as has been added adjacent to 41st, that the premium on the car spaces is reducing a bit. So, the city does still have a lot of additional spaces this year that we didn't have last year, plus this would provide seven dedicated trailer spaces. And the, since the beginning, really, of all of these leases, the idea of the city sharing or tenants sharing a portion of the lot, while it sounds simple and it works very efficiently because some uses are used in the mornings, others at night, it has worked, but it has come with a lot of effort, a lot of strife over sharing, and this would permanently get the city out of that arrangement, which would be a benefit to the city.
I guess, Katie, so if you think about, we'll take a vote on this in a minute, but if you think about next steps, I mean, obviously, we'd have to amend the lease for the restaurant, for the new leased area, right? And Douglas, I know the Water and Sewer Commission's doing some work down there right now, kind of right in this area. I mean, we didn't, I know we can't get this done before season, but could we, would it move us to, well, I'm just going to answer my own question, I think, to go ahead and fix 41st as they're doing it, but it really doesn't work until you do the whole thing?
That's correct.
Right, to do the ingress/egress?
I think that we can, right now, it's kind of wall-to-wall gravel, so I think that we can change the layout for this year in gravel if it's the choice of council. So, I think we can use the layout this year, but I think it would be at some point after this project and after the busy season that we, that before any construction could happen.
Is the restaurant in agreement?
We, I have been assuming that they are. They work through this with Matt. I have not explicitly heard directly from them that they are, but we received this from Matt on their behalf.
And I mean, it might make sense to do it in all gravel for a season before putting anything in concrete, stone. So, it might actually work out better that way if that, you know, is the will of council.
Yeah. So, Douglas, seeing you're coming again, if we, so you would, if we approve this, would you go ahead and lay it out this way right now?
I think we, I think we would.
Because we need to get the trailer parking.
Yeah.
It's kind of kludgy.
We're talking, I think we've spoken with, who'd we talk, I mean, we, it's really a matter of putting in some, a couple posts and rope fence. It wouldn't be anything.
It would not be anything.
Major construction.
Yeah.
And would that be true of the green space? I mean, is there any reason we couldn't start that? I know we've got budget money in there, but given all the construction that would happen at some point, I guess you would not advise moving forward with green space at this point?
I think it could be done. I mean, I don't, it might be, it might be a challenging time of the year. I mean, just kind of forecasting when it would actually be putting workers down there, but it's potentially a possibility.
That would depend on what scale of, you know, what scale we're talking. I mean, if we're talking landscaping and, you know, soft work, I feel like that would be something we could do.
Yeah, kind of what Matt had drawn here with the palms and the sweet grass and other things. And Douglas, this on the left-hand side between where we piped the 41st ditch and the residence there, so this is the, we could put plantings in that area? I know we have to have the 15-foot buffer, right?
It has to be a 15-foot spatial buffer, and there has to be a minimum number of plantings in that strip to create the buffer. Majority of that strip has an existing vegetation that's screening it pretty well. This particular property could use some additional screening. I don't know that Matt Klein laid this landscaping out with any kind of visit to the site in terms of looking, so I think that would be, that would likely change, but we would have to have the 15-foot space there for buffer vegetation.
But I think we could make that look aesthetically pleasing and still be, you know, still serve its purpose as a buffer.
Jungle.
I was just saying, I think there's some concern about trailer parking. I think we should clarify, how many trailer parking spots do we have now in that area?
So, on that side of the ramp?
Right.
There are about 10, but they are shared.
Yeah.
So, it's a challenge, you know, and we've done a series of MOUs for the last two summers that it went beyond the lease and gave people the access to those spaces in the morning, and then they started transitioning around 4:00 or 5:00 in the afternoon to becoming car spaces.
But I just want to get the numbers. So, there's 10 that's shared between residents. So there's 10 that's shared between residents and non-resident there.
Well, the big issue with that is that if a car parked, the way it is now, a car could park in basically half of a trailer spot.
Block it.
And then it's gone. And they're hard to get in and out of. And so if people don't park in them perfectly, it takes up two or three.
But this is going to be seven that's dedicated to trailer.
That's correct.
So I want to just clarify, we're really, from an efficiency standpoint, it could even be more than what we currently have, the way they're being utilized right now. I know there was some concern. So I just wanted to answer, make sure you understood. There's also trailer parking on the other side of the Marina side also that's not going to be touched.
Yeah, and I would just add to that point, the 10 spaces that are there now only became resident-only, they've been resident-only for the last two summers, but that was only by the virtue of the tenant agreeing to sign an MOU to make that happen. So that's not in the lease and that has been really a temporary thing for the last two summers. So probably not something the city can rely on happening forever and ever. It is truly shared among the tenants.
And I think, Katie, to your point, I mean, where the parking is, you know, John, opposite of where it is currently with Schuler's side of the property, I mean, much easier to get in and out of, right off the ramp, you know, for folks.
Absolutely. The trailer backing and pulling in is considerably easier.
I apologize because this has been a very, very long process and what I'm going to say is not going to be nice. First of all, my vision for this area was to have a small park area that would be for the use of the community with a little bit of parking there. I'm a traffic engineer. On this site, there is more than enough parking to accommodate the uses that are there now. The Marina tenant now is very generous in sharing their parking and has offered to the restaurant that after, late in the afternoon or the evening, when there are fewer parkers at the Marina, the restaurant people can use the Marina parking for themselves. So we do not need parking in this area as much as what is being asked for. So that's the first thing, is my vision is different from what we've gone into it with, so keep that in mind. But the second thing is, I look at this compromise and what I realize is we get 12 spaces or 15 spaces or whatever it is, and we get a roadway that has become the entrance to the Marina right through that space. And it's called our part of the divided use of the land. So I see us as losing terribly and having all kinds of traffic in and out of an area that I had envisioned as a park. Unfortunately, I guess that vision was wrong if we adopt this plan. All the other plans that I had seen, now there must have been others, because I think I saw A through G or something like that, H, had the Islander Restaurant using land that was supposed to be for us at the front entrance to this area for their entrance to the restaurant. So I just have a real problem with that. This also is incomplete. The dumpsters that are at the back of this lot now are not shown on this map anywhere. And I don't know where they're going to go. Evidently, he's going to depend on the mercy of the Marina now and use Marina space for parking, for his dumpsters, rather than provide for him himself on the property that he is allowed to use. So if they go back where they were now, then we're going to have not only a park, a park with an entrance full of dumpsters. So I have a real problem with what we're showing here. There is a solution with what we have here that would not change this dramatically, but would actually give us at least take that driveway to the restaurant out of our share of this land. And it would be a very simple change that would be, I think the restaurant might lose four of their spaces that they could recover sharing with the Marina. So I just think we have a very uncooperative, shortsighted tenant who is not willing to compromise at all and is looking only to his own self. And it's way more parking, three times as much parking as he ever had for the restaurant before. So I don't think I can support this plan.
So Jan, where would you put the ingress egress?
There are two of them on the plan right now. One of them is a permanent one and the other one is over by the public ramp that says it's for his trucks to come in and out of. I think that's enough for the restaurant. There could also be a better circulation plan that would take, that you could put at the back of that marked parking area and just join the aisle that's closest to the waterway to the permanent entrance and exit that they have there now. It'd be very easy. It'd be very straightforward. I'm sorry, I didn't see this until two days ago, so I haven't had a chance to talk with anybody internally about how it could be done.
So the problem with that is that you get stuck by the boat, the boat, people using the boat ramp. You can't have the ingress, the only ingress egress to the restaurant as also a boat ramp. Because when people are using the boat ramp, and they do, and I mean, the boat, people on the boat ramp do absolutely use up that, the ramp, all the way back to where that ingress egress would be for, you know, leaving, parking the boat while they, or parking the car and trailer while they go tie up the boat and then coming back. And it's, that's the problem with that.
I'm talking about the entrance where the two decorative trees are shown?
Yeah, that's where, that's the boat ramp. And that is used. And if you go there on any sort of busy day, that is absolutely, it's not uncommon to see two or three boats, trailers, yeah, staging.
Isn't that the way it works now?
It's more open now. It's not as contained, I guess.
I think we need to, I would like to see the engineer, I don't think this is something we need to discuss at the meeting in detail, but that's my concern with it.
But that's why that other entrances there.
Yeah. That's just my opinion.
Yeah.
And the restaurant is not getting, I mean, that was the whole point of the square footage. If we take square, if we're just using numbers, it's the exact same square footage that they had before and now. It's just all in one contiguous shape.
Katie, I'm surprised you didn't have comment to, it's an easy fix on, we're on version P. There's not much easy about this.
And I do think that Matt Klein might disagree with that.
Yeah.
I do feel sorry for him.
Yeah. Do whatever you want. Other questions, comments?
Mayor, I'd like to see us get the, not only the, is it the traffic, it's not the traffic engineer, the traffic designer, Klein, as well as the restaurant operators together along with us to discuss this in more detail. I mean, I think that's the right thing to do. I looked at this and there's a lot of questions. Jan raised a lot of questions on it. I'm wondering myself if this is the best design that could be come up with, but it would be good if we could get all of the parties together one more time and see if we could work something out. So the way this is laid out right here, I couldn't support it either.
I was just asking Rusty, I'm just curious as what you would ask for, you know, if we got them all together, what kind of things would you ask for? Because I'm at a loss here to myself, but I'm just curious. Just to give myself some thoughts, are there things in here that you would do away with and are there other things that you would add to it as a starting point with, you know, if we got everybody together?
You want me?
No, I was asking Rusty.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, John, I didn't catch all that.
Yeah, no, I mean, if we got everybody together, I mean, you obviously looked at it and had some thoughts, is there things that you would take away from this, things you would add to it? What kind of constructive kind of?
Well, I want to give it some thought. I mean, we've got a lot of these plans that have been out there in the past, as we all know. I mean, this has been a work in progress for years now. So there's a lot of things that we could look at in the past that we got, we have on file. Take a look at the way this one is laid out and see if there are bits and pieces or plug and play, however you want to put it, that comes up with a more feasible solution that would be beneficial for everybody. I tend to agree with Jan in regards to the ingress egress with the, you know, with the deliveries and all of that, going through that area there that is really, really kind of right in the middle of where our green space and all is going to be.
Ain't no green space.
And, yeah, it's just, to me, it just kind of defeats the purpose of what we intended for that piece of property.
And Katie, you made a comment, I think Klein, I'm assuming the restaurant has looked at this and.
Yes.
Through Klein and are good with it.
I mean, and we have all been working together. I mean, we haven't necessarily sat down in the same room, but the restaurant has been working with Klein and we have too. And, I mean, hey, if somebody else can do a better job, please do. Because this is, this is a kind of, I mean, yeah, it's a square peg in a round hole. That's all it is. And that's the thing. And it's never, ever, ever going to be what everybody wants.
And when you say square peg, round, just the?
We got, yeah, we got the water on one side, we got the restaurant on one side, we got the fact that, you know, the restaurants had the space in the back for all these years to use for just their employees. And so they like that, you know, isolated area. I mean, we've got the boat ramps, the boat parking, I mean, it's, you know. So.
Douglas, you got any comment? I know you've been in the middle of this for two hours now, too.
The only comment would be is, I would think that if council is of a mind to have something in place for this season, time is of the essence. If you're okay with continuing another season with the way it's been, I know that Matt would be happy to come back and I'm assuming the restaurant tenants would also be happy to come sit down and talk about it. But if you want it to be in place for this season, I think, I don't know that you have time to kind of continue the process and Q, R, and S beyond.
Yeah, I mean, I had already kind of reserved myself that this wasn't happening this season either way. Jimmy?
The present employee parking for under 71 hasn't always been employee parking. For many years, there was a building on that part of the lot that the city owned and they rented it out to a construction company for many, many years. Maybe like 2005 or something like that, I think they tore it down. But then it has not always been employee parking for the restaurant.
But it is now. And it is until 2025, or 45, sorry. So that's neither here nor there.
There was a 40 and wishful slip, Katie.
Yeah, exactly. We were stuck with it until 2045.
Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Katie and Blair have been in the meetings, but it seems to me like if we're not going to go with this particular solution and if people aren't comfortable with it, then the solution is we kick the can down the road again until next year. I don't think the restaurant's going to go for another version of this and I don't know that we can get this cycle through, I think at Douglas's point, I don't have time to get another version implemented before the first of the year. So maybe the path is to just leave it until next year.
And Scott, when you say first of the year, you mean first of the season?
I mean, first of the season.
Okay, perfect.
Because we've got to get the restaurant, you know, signed on to whatever modifications are needed.
Yep, with you.
Well, one other point I want to make, and I think, Jan, to your point about the use of the Marina parking, that is not a codified use. So I think from a business perspective and looking at requirements to 2045, yes, it's a generous arrangement at this point, but I think to count on it for the long term, if I were in the restaurant shoes and Marina shoes, it's not codified, so I don't think you can count on it.
I'd just like to say that the amount of parking that even in this purple space is triple what the restaurant started with.
Based on what?
35 spaces were dedicated in the beginning. They shared the middle space with other tenants, so it was not theirs just to use. And then the last, the back space was not available for their employees until a couple of years ago when the lease was signed.
Well, if you go back to before that, before the dedicated employee parking, the whole entire area was shared among the tenants, so that's.
Yeah. And we're talking about exclusively dedicated for him now. So I think, and this has nothing to do with us or whatever.
It's not an individual person, it is a restaurant.
Yeah, it's enough.
If you go back to the premise of the square foot allocation, I think that gets to that, I think Katie summed it up, square peg or round hole. That is the allocation. And if that's the fair allocation for this solution, we've just got to figure out what solution we can work with on that square footage. It's just not, it's just not fitting.
And Katie, I think I saw from the minutes in your committee, this was not a recommendation from the committee, it was just get it to council for a discussion, I think, is.
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah. So I'm hearing enough that it sounds like we need Q and R. Sorry.
Yay.
John, you?
Jimmy, Blair, that we're.
What is the direction, workshop with the tenant and the engineer? Through the committee?
Yeah.
The committee seemed okay with it, just putting it out there that, I feel like if it's not all of council, you're going to potentially be right back to kind of where you are here.
I think that's what, you're suggesting do it at a workshop?
I would suggest that.
Katie, what's your?
Give it a try. Can't hurt.
All right, Douglas, good for next. Next item, sorry, next item, new business, beach update report of $25,000 in emergency sandbag purchase. Douglas, you want to give us a quick update?
Yes, this is, the beach erosion has continued to really be kind of focused on the houses right in the middle of the Beechwood East block. So we made an emergency purchase of an additional 50 bags since your last allocation and the city's procurement ordinance requires that be reported. So that's what's happening here. I would, by just way of update, tell you that, and I think I sent an email earlier today, that the Army Corps project is delivering sand to the Beechwood, I'm sorry, to the Breach Inlet end of the island. And we've talked a little bit before about that before we move that sand, we have to remove the sandbags that are down there. So we believe that we're very close to a point of transitioning from buying new bags and installing them in the Beechwood East area to actually moving the bags that are currently at Breach Inlet properties, physically moving them down to the Breach Inlet end. And we think that that could, that really, to be in a place to do our berm restoration work in April, we really need to start that shifting of bags in March. So here, within the next couple of weeks, we would anticipate, as the sand from the Army Corps project gets built up, we would start removing bags landward of where that sand is being built up. So we'll keep you posted on that. There is a cost that's not, it's kind of a quarter of the cost, if not less, of new bags to move them, so there is a cost.
Just labor.
Yeah, to doing that work. So we'll report that back. Good news in terms of the Breach Inlet sand finally showing up.
Douglas, I feel like we need a moment of silence. We've been waiting on that one. It's been two years.
Been a long time coming.
Waiting, so. Waiting, so, okay. Next item is approval of financial analyst job description. We talked about this at our workshop. Is there a motion?
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, consideration of Thomason-Hutton proposal for $25,000 to include permit modification, construction administration, and surveying to create new drainage easements for upcoming flood mitigation work within the Wild Dunes Golf Course. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Douglas, you want to, just quick background on here?
Yep, the, this is the work that you will have talked, you've talked about and authorized to happen within the Wild Dunes Golf Course. Thomason-Hutton has had to modify the permit that was issued to the golf course to cover some of our work. I think they're well underway with that portion of the work, and it may already be submitted now. We also would like for them to handle construction administration, so, so work through the project with the contractor, as well as we have a need to create new drainage easements within the golf course. We want to be able to maintain whatever we install on the golf course going forward, and they've been agreeable to granting us drainage easements where we have improvements. So this is $25,000 that would cover that work.
And Douglas, again, I know Jan usually do this for clarity, we're not paying for golf course improvements, we're paying for flood mitigation along the Waterway Boulevard path, which is a much bigger project than just what's happening on the golf course.
And to get this done now is hugely beneficial to us.
Yeah, for all the stars to align, it's pretty incredible.
Well spent.
Yeah. Douglas, just so I'm clear that there's a spreadsheet on, I don't know what page this is, it looks like 52. We, we originally signed a proposal or an agreement with them on August of '23 that included construction services, but that didn't, are you saying that did not include this part on
That's correct.
Golf course, so this is the added piece on the golf course?
That's correct.
Yeah. And so is our total contract now, if I read that right, $263,000, and it originally was $220? All the way to the right, it says total revised budget.
Two change orders, right.
Yeah, three change order, or two change, yeah. Okay, now, it, it seems like that's the budget, but the math's not adding up with all the things, so some things may be coming in less than what, than what was originally proposed or budgeted.
Total budget? I don't know, John, I'll have to check that, but it should be
All right.
Two sixty-three minus twenty-five would get you to our existing, existing contract.
Contract.
But I'll, I can verify that.
Yeah, that's two thirty-something, but then we added fifteen. It looks like, it's just, if I add the added, the, the amount that we approved in change orders to the original amount, it's not totaling to that, that's my only question.
You're adding the bottom row across, and it's not coming to two sixty-three.
Right.
Okay, let me, let me check that.
Yeah.
So we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, boards and commissions report, board of zoning appeals, minutes are attached, planning commission, minutes are attached, accommodations tax advisory committee, no meeting in January, environmental advisory committee, minutes are attached. Next item is resolutions. This is resolution 2025-02, a resolution to authorize front Beach Fest. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Waive the reading?
Waive the reading.
Rusty, you good with that?
Yes.
There's a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is resolution 2025-03, a resolution to sponsor Lovello this fall. Also a motion with to waive the reading if you're willing.